Yes, we are asked to try and remember to turn on and off our microphones.
Okay, we'll jump to the zoning part of it. As we recall, Glenn's here too, so that's good, so he can hear this. We had talked to him about two weeks ago about this. As you recall, that our county zoning does not allow for a transfer station. So there are a couple of things that would have to happen, but basically it's been existing as a non-conforming use. And once you closed it, it kind of triggered the end of that. And so now they would have to come into compliance. So we can prepare an ordinance amendment for the transfer station, a direction of the board. It sounds like they're coming here, but we'll just get through ours. The new ordinance would include performance standards for the transfer stations. They'd be conditional use in the designated zones. They could be written to be a permit by rule size. That means a small, just I think a cubic yards or something. So it wouldn't be a big, huge land issue there. It also includes buffers from things like shoreland, bluff land, R1 districts, parks, trails.
Just got a question. When you talk about 120 cubic yards, is that total? Or is that only demolition? Bypass, bypass, is that covered under that? Or is it just demolition?
I think it's onsite. Is it demo?
Well, it's sort of, it doesn't count. They did the boxes that he was transferring out.
Okay.
I have one question. So it says if the transfer stations are added to the ordinance, then anyone who meets the performance and permitting standards and obtains the permit can open a transfer station.
Absolutely.
So does that mean we could have like five transfer stations?
We could, but they've got to go through the process. Remember, it's a conditional use process. And the neighbors will be notified and has to meet all the setbacks. And the board and the planning commission would have to decide if it fits in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay. Also, I think, let's see if I can go and escape out of here. And then we just did a quick map. See if we can show that. Might take a second, it's pretty big, but we kind of gave, give you an idea of where it would go. So everything in gray really, I'm just going to zoom in to a little bit. Everything in gray is buffered out. So that would be, we just use what we typically do for, okay. What we typically do for like feedlots is a thousand feet. So we took a thousand feet from all the R1 districts in the county. And we took out the shoreland. What else do we do? Buffer.
We buffer, let's see.
City zoning, R1, parks and trails, we did a thousand feet. And then the colors that you see behind here, those are all, that's our current zoning districts. So you can see anything that's not gray could be a potential site. If we allowed it in all the zoning districts, A1, A2, A3. So there could be some possible sites for it. Again, you've got pretty good criteria on how to, you know, it can't be everywhere, but it's got to be setback from certain things. So, but it could go in a number of places. But again, you have to have a willing owner that wants to do that. You've got to have a business that's ready to start up. You know, we can put again, the restrictions on it. So it's not, you know, a, you know, thousand acre site for a dump, or excuse me, I shouldn't say dump, but for a landfill or a transfer station. So we can put restrictions on it, just so it's small, basically what we have now. So.
So I have a question. So if we do zone, do the zoning, and let's say we do have three of them that start up and they don't clean it up. Is that Minnesota pollution control situation? Is that a good U-County situation?
That one, I'm going to have to have Jess talk about, because I don't know how much, it sounds like that the state from our meeting the other day, that the state doesn't do a whole lot of oversight on some of the smaller ones. So it probably ended up being a zone.
Compared to wells, they don't do anything with wells either.
Yeah.
They say they do, but they don't actually do anything other than say, yeah, you can do it there.
Yeah.
And then they don't even know what there means.
So it would be basically our restrictions initially doing the CUP on it and giving the parameters, buffering, blocking, site, that kind of thing. So Jess and Greg are here. I'll get out of this and they can start back up. So.
I'm just asleep.
Do you have the call point up here? There you go.
To answer your question about cleanup, the PCA, the PCA.
Maybe it is.
It is.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good. The PCA reacts to enforcement issues. So if somebody would call in and complain, they would respond at that point. But otherwise, like Lisa mentioned, it's pretty hands off.
But in all likelihood, if it was something we did, it would be a conditional use permit. If we were not cleaning it up, it would be in violation of the condition use permit, which would put the county in charge of enforcing the ordinance. So it is just a transfer station. It's not a landfill. We're just talking transfer stations.
Yep. Okay, so a little background on, on what's been happening with these landfills here. About a year ago, we came and we talked to the board. Just and the topic at that point is it's getting full. It's not full, but it's getting full. So what do we want to do? You know, do we want to continue to operate this thing as a transfer station? Do we want to continue to operate it just until it's full and then close it? Or do we just want to start closing the thing right now? And it was decided at that time that we would continue to fill it up till it gets to the two years, until it's full, which is about two years out, and then close it. So that's what made sense a year ago. Then we had a discussion with the board last month, just about almost a year or two, and three or four days of our last discussion on this. On this one, we were talking about, we knew that the state was starting to develop some new rules. And the rules will apply to operating landfills once it's effective. The real question is, is what's considered an operating landfill? The rules may have new requirements that we don't have today. Enhanced cover, meaning you put a geotextile fabric over the top of the whole thing versus just two feet of soil over a clay cap. Financial assurance for closure costs for the next 30 years. Water monitoring may be extended. Right now, it's, we have to, we have to monitor for 20 years after it's closed. That could go up to 30 or potentially 40 years after closure. And collecting and treating demolition landfill leachate. That would be a difficult one for us since it wasn't designed to collect leachate. There's no effective date for the rules at this point. PCA staff figures it'll take them to about the end of the calendar year 23 to get the rules drafted. And then it's going to have to go through the legal review, public comment and all that. And they're anticipating that sometime in the summer of 2024, these new rules will be in effect. And anybody who is in operation at that time will be meeting these new rules. So county board approved hiring SEH to begin the closure plan. SEH has been working with us, well, since longer than I've been here. Doing the annual, or doing the calculations. We do surveys, they do the calculations on how much of it got filled within the year. So they're going to start working on a closure plan. We're going to terminate the operations agreement, which we did at that board meeting day. And then discuss some agreements with Mr. Steberg as far as terminating the landowner, the landowner agreement. And we've met once with Glenn here, a week or so ago, to at least start, start this conversation. The board further directed that we have a committee of the whole, which is where we're at here today. Talked about the pros and cons of doing this permit by rule. And the theory is, is if it's under this permit by rule, it may not, if it's small enough operation, may not be covered by their, if it's just a transfer station, probably wouldn't be impacted by the rules that they have going into the future. That's all a theory too, because they really haven't started, started working on the rules enough to answer the questions. What are the rules going to say? These are just some of the revenues and expenses going back to the last few years. What gets a little difficult here is the ones that in yellow, for instance, are referring to landfills. And so some of the costs or some of the revenues, mostly costs, could be related to the Ben Street landfill versus this landfill. And we haven't delved any further back into the questions any more detailed than it is here. The last line shows you, you know, it shows what our revenues are, it shows what our expenses are. Now at the bottom of the sheet there, it shows you the difference between the two, which basically means that we're using levy dollars or county dollars of some sort to pay those costs. And you can see, you know, it's costing somewhere generally around a hundred thousand a year, for the most part in levy to operate this landfill in the Ben Street.
Just a comment. So if we just closed the landfill and did nothing about transfer station, that doesn't mean that the 22 cost of 107,000 goes away totally. There's still going to be ongoing costs.
Yeah, monitoring.
We have to monitor.
For, for 20 plus years, no matter what we have beyond. I just want to make sure we understand that the 107,000 is not the cost to operate the landfill. It's going to be there going on in the future, some, to some degree.
Yeah, some of it, yeah.
Wouldn't be that cost though, would it?
No.
No.
It depends on, it depends on if that water monitoring is 64,000 there, or if it's more than there. The, the maintenance of the site you're going to have to do, it depends on what kind of a land agreement we have with Glenn going forward. All those are going to be costs that aren't going to go away.
For at least 20 years.
So the first, the five, the full five years that are shown for the permitting and the monitoring, that includes Ben Street. Those all, all those years do. 2023 year to date, that's 17.5, that's, that's just Wanamango. Because the Ben Street landfill has been turned over to the state.
Right. And do we have, do we have monitoring wells at that site? And will we have to put in more?
Depends.
Once we close it. But, but if we close it before with the rules change, we're current right now.
Could be. Well, we're, we're, we're being in an operating mode. So if we're going to go into a closure mode, things may change either way. I haven't been through the process with them, so I'm not sure if they require more. They're, they're going to take a look at it and see if they're comfortable, if these wells are giving them the information they're looking for. And if they think that they need a couple more before we go into closure, they'll require those to be installed.
A question. When you go and look at the revenues, all the revenues are coming from the Wanamango site. There aren't any revenues coming from Ben Street.
Correct.
So that yellow one probably shouldn't be.
Yeah, that, that one's incorrect.
Okay. And then like on the insurance, I mean, not sure if the bench street is done. The insurance is still going to stay the same or go up like that. So some of the numbers, maybe we, you know, because I've been looking at these numbers a lot and, and talking with Mr. Steberg. And just trying to come up with, okay, let's say we do go and zone this. Or, but can one private individual at least cover their costs or try to make some money doing this? But things are kind of mashed together between the two. Where does it, what is, are the actual costs to get rid of our dumpsters? You know, what is actually coming in? So it, there's a, you know, I even found one of my slips here. There's a state, 17% state solid waste tax. Do we get to see any of that when we close this?
No, no.
The state, the state just holds on to that.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's covering their costs for the closed landfill that they have, and that they're taking care of today.
Solid waste tax. It doesn't say closed, but.
You gotta say that. You have, you have to say that tongue in cheek. Because we know what, 40 or 50% of that goes right into the general fund. It does not go to landfill. We know there's, there's taking money off of that. We know that, but. So I think that's, that's the real question, God, is can a private individual do this? I mean, you get a box on your place, and I just did it with, with the construction at our house. And each box will cost you 600 bucks to get rid of. Yep, that's the cost of the box. That's the cost of the guy hauling it. And that's the cost to get rid of it at SKB. Well, if you're going to try to get $600 out of charging people to put it in a box at a transfer station, you're going to be hard pressed to get $600 from a 20 yard box.
Right. And then, and I think we look at the, where all this is going, because I did contact Dodge County too. And, and they don't pay anything to get rid of their e-waste, I know. I think they pay very little to get rid of their appliances. So I mean, there are companies that are looking at this scrap and there is some value in it. And, you know, it, ultimately, what I would like to do is to try to find some way to keep this thing rolling the way it is. I know we're, it's a, a non-conforming use. And we don't even have the boxes on our permit right now, do we? I mean, as the demolition landfill. So if, because when I talked with the MPCA person in Winona or Rochester, wherever she's at, she really encouraged us to keep, or to find a way to keep this thing open, because these materials are going to end up somewhere in a ditch. You know, so if, if that's a coordination with, you know, the county keeping our operations going the way we are. I know there's legalities. I know there's, you know, leasing. I know there's a lot of other paperwork. But at least we can find out and keep better track of our actual costs for just that site. So, you know, like you say, the monitoring and, and where all this stuff comes in, just to, you know, all we have is miscellaneous disposal. You know, we don't have the tire disposal, the appliance disposal, the electronics disposal. I mean, we don't, we don't have those numbers for us to actually sit back here and say, nope, we're closing it. Cost is 100,000. We're done. That I, I, we need some more. So.
Yeah. So volume wise, we've gone back through, as we do a survey every year. And part of that's to figure out how much of the capacity has been used up within the last year. So this gives us, this is the change in the volume after it's been, the material's been put in, it's been covered over it. So it's, this is showing us, we're averaging around 1,400 cubic yards in a year. You take the number of days that Glenn has opened and you divide it by that number, and it shows he's bringing in somewhere around 11 cubic yards a day while he's open. Take 20, out of all, all this statistics shows 2022 is a big year. That was the year of COVID and people were home taking, doing a lot of demo when they were, in their spare time. So if you take that out of it, it, it shows a, and, and these numbers, this is the, this is what is actually put into the demo landfill. This number as far as waste that was disposed at the site and then was transferred out, like the TVs and tires and all the rest of the stuff that doesn't end up there. That number is not showing here. This is just simply showing the numbers of how much actually was disposed of within the landfill. So there's a lot more that comes, that gets brought in. All the tires get put in with all the tires. And then when that, that one is full and he takes that away. So. Permit by rule facilities, they're, again, they're, they're limited in size. And the state isn't quite as concerned about them because they are small. And like I say, they can only have 120 yards of material on site. Somebody comes and dumps a load, and then the operator takes, takes all the tires and puts them over here and gets, gets it all sorted out. And only 10% of it is left, then that's really the, the only 10% that goes against 120 cubic yards that's sitting on site.
Just a question for clarification. You initially, you listed like 120 cubic yards in one of the previous statements up on the top, just to clarify that of a demolition landfill, you're just talking 120 cubic yards of a transfer station?
Right, for, yeah. Right.
One of the initial things, you said 100. I just wanted to clarify that it is, it's not any landfill. It's just a transfer station.
Correct, correct. Yeah, yeah. We, we could have put in a permit by rule transfer station.
Yeah, it's just one of your earlier things that said a first thing, 120 cubic yard demolition landfills in the county ordinance. We're not going to approve another landfill at all. It's just transfer stations.
Transfer station.
Clarifying when I earlier.
You're correct. So we met here, first part of October, we talked to the PCA staff. And here's, here's what they had to tell us. When they first came up with allowing these demolition landfills, they assumed that, that they weren't harmful from a pollution standpoint. You know, it's just two by fours and it's concrete blocks and all that. But they found out through time, since they've been doing this monitoring, that even, even something like drywall, if you put it in a demolition landfill and the water does get through it, and water that, that leaches through that that drywall will actually bring out some chemicals you really don't want in your drinking water. Those are the kind of issues I don't think were thought about well enough when they decided to allow these demolition landfills. And groundwater, Minnesota is very fortunate. We have very good groundwater for the most part. And the last thing we need to do is get it all contaminated, because I'm not sure how expensive it's going to be for a glass of water if all of our aquifers around here are contaminated. So they're saying it's time to step it up and try to prevent that from happening. And therefore they're coming up with these new rules to try to not let that happen for the next generations. So landfills that are in operation after the rules go into effect, you require financial assurance, more expensive covers, water monitoring could be increased by 50 or 100% up to 40 years, and leachate collection and treatment. And collection and treatment is not cheap in and of itself. PCA has not defined what a closed landfill is. They're thinking it may be, it may be as simple as if you went through a process and said, we're not accepting any more waste. It might be if your landfill is fully covered. It might be if it just has a plan to be fully covered. It could, and it could require that you have a certain amount of your financial assurance funded at a certain period of time before they say, okay, you're considered closed. So it's really, we're trying to, trying to meet a target that has not been defined at those points. If we want to try to get it closed before they come up with these rules. They got a lot of work to do and they know it, to try to get all this work done here and get something in effect by next summer. So a little schedule here. The 18th of November is when the board decided that we were going to close the demolition landfill. 60 days after that comes out to the 18th of November. So the 18th of November is the last day. That'll be open to accept materials. Scheduled a cow, which is where we are today here, to bring you up to speed. The annual volume, bill volume will be surveyed by, by our staff sometime here, it's on the next month. Consultants should be able to complete, complete the design by the end of the year. We can bid out the project, open bids in March. Hopefully complete the construction sometime in the middle of the summer and get the final documentation to the PCA by middle of August. So here's what we're looking for, what we can do. The real question is, where's the moving date? And what's the definition of close going to be coming in next summer? And that's the part that nobody knows right now. But I think what we're, we're finding out here is that we don't want to be still in an open state whenever that does happen. So some considerations. A lot of people really enjoy having that facility out there because it's not a long drive. I know some people think driving to Red Wing to get rid of it is too far. They can go down to Homestead County, or they can go up to Ember Grove Heights and pay to have it disposed of up there. But as, I think what everybody's afraid of is if there isn't something that's easy and convenient and relatively financially affordable. A lot of this stuff is going to end up in the, in the ditches of the township, particularly on township roads. And we had this whole discussion, was it December or so? That at that point, the townships are already saying is, gee, can you, the county, help us do something with all this dump that's ending up in the bottom of our ditches? So the concern is, we don't give them an opportunity to have something that's close and effective that we don't have a lot more people just dumping this stuff off, particularly the couches and TVs. Right now, the ordinance doesn't permit transfer stations, the agricultural districts, and Lisa just ran you through a whole zoning part of that. So I don't know if we have to go too much of this. Lisa's already been through it. So what are we going to do from here? So one thing we could look at would be to have discussions with the cities. And we did meet with the city managers yesterday and Lisa brought up the subject that this may be something that this would work if they're interested in allowing a facility like this to be in their industrial parks. And I didn't get, they didn't like, you know, throw rotten bananas at me or anything. So I think some of the city managers thought, you know, this is something we could look at. And, and see if you can find somebody who wants to do a, build something in the city. In which case, we don't have to worry about the concerns that Lisa has on changing the current county's zoning laws for what's happening out in the county. Everything would be controlled by the city's ordinances. It could be a private individual could open it up or a public one. If the county still wanted to be involved with this, county could still be involved with running one of these, but within a city. If, other than that, should have to revise your zoning is, as we talked about earlier. Or we just, we just do nothing and, and see what happens. So that's really it. So we've got to present at this time.
Disadvantageous to have it in the city's industrial parks, other than that we don't control that?
Well, I think a lot of it is, it's more a matter of, if you think of a, of a big demolition site, you think of a dusty operation. A lot of certainly stink and, and all that. So if it's, and that's the other part of it, if we're talking about having more of a transfer station and particularly if the city said, well, we're only going to allow a PBR, a small one to come in there. They're, they're, they're not anywhere as, as stinky as if this is just solid waste. Because solid waste, who knows what's all in that? This, for the most part, this stuff is more inert. It's, it's not that dusty. It doesn't smell that bad. It's not that loud of an operation, anything above and beyond what you would have at a lot of industrial facilities within an industrial park.
Yeah, I've already asked on that and it's fault. There is no more land there until they buy some more and expand it. But I don't know what the, what their thoughts are right now on that. So.
Yeah. Well, the city of Zimbrot is trying to expand their industrial park on the west side of 52. And I think what happens with this Pell study on Highway 52, where an interchange is put in under that whole thing, could have a big impact on their industrial park out there too. At some point, that thing could take off. But it'd be up to them if, if, if they'd be willing to. And I don't know if they have anything in their rules that would prevent it from happening now. But I don't, they probably just never been approached by anybody. I don't know how many, many, ever even thought about this as a concept. But they didn't, they weren't real negative about it. And like you say, it's, I think a lot of people, the fear is because it's the unknown and they're assuming it's going to be a dirty, stinky operation.
If one of those cities took this on though, and decided to have a demolition landfill, then they would be required to have, be under all these same rules and new rules and stipulations coming up, correct?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. It'd still be, it'd still be held to the state rules and any federal rules that.
We're thinking of transfer.
Just for transfer.
Right, right. But, but even for a transfer station. I mean, they have rules for a transfer station. One of them being, it can't be more than 120 cubic yards unless you want to go into a full transfer station, which is I would assume has a lot more regulation from the state than it does one of these PBRs, because they are so relatively small.
I would completely believe that on the east side of the county, you're already using the Red Wing state.
Yeah, yeah. As far as we know. Yeah.
In conversations with Red Wing too, they, they are more than capable to handle the volumes that, that the Wanamango landfill are currently experiencing. So with the closure, Red Wing can absorb that if they need to.
Well, in the solid waste committee meeting, we had, you know, your comment just now about if a city did it, then it would be the city would have to follow all the rules. I'm not so sure a city would operate it. They would make space available and have a private operator operate it. Which means the private operator has followed the rules, not city, unless the city owned it. Then the city would have followed rules. And one of the things I said during the, the committee uh, that we talked about was that I'm concerned that if a city or a local unit of government, county, township, whatever, isn't involved in it. Managing it and making sure it's run properly gets very difficult to enforce a conditional use or any of those things versus when we're involved or a city's involved, now they're going to make sure it's run properly. So I, I don't, I have a hard time with it being private only because the regulation becomes, you know, MPCA is not going to help us out. Yeah, if it's in rural Gudgee County, that means the county's got to manage it. And how often and how much checking and all of the pieces of that do we get involved with versus and with Glenn, this has worked really well for many, many, many years. And before that, his brother Charlie worked for many, many years because a local unit of government was involved in the process and was part of the management of the system. Take that out of it and it goes just private. Now who's the regulator and how do you enforce it? And how easy is, and you know this from land committee, it's very hard to enforce rules going forward. The process takes months or years to actually get active, a, a point, because we're not going to be able to pull the permit. I mean, if, if they don't follow the rules, MPCA has got to pull the permit. Cause we don't issue the permit, we only issue the conditional use.
The only thing I have to say about that is, does the county really want to be financially legally tied to something like that in the future? If we change the ordinance and allow transfer stations per by rule and we say we're only going to be involved directly with one person, it's not going to stand up legally. So I think if we do change the ordinance to allow it, I think the board's got to decide, are we in this or are we not in this? Because if we do it for one guy and then we go on another guy we don't like and we just say, we're just not going to be partner with you, we're going to be in bigger trouble. So just to keep that in mind that uh, what fits for one fits for all on the zoning.
Is there a way we could do a temporary one? Could we just say, we want to extend this for one year? And then this issue will be over. I mean, is that something to kind of, you know, give the city some time? Give them Broda some time, see what their, you know, industrial park does, is there, can we just, you know what? Right now, we're in non-conforming use, can someone explain what that non-conforming use is? So then, once we close the landfill, now we can't do anything anymore?
Right, so once you end the non-conforming use, whatever you do there has to come into compliance with your current rules. So like on some of the houses that are in, in areas that uh, if it's a non-conforming use on the house or something and the house burns down, if it's more than fifty percent, then you don't get your house back. So it's, it's a use that's been there for a long time, typically something's changed, like the zoning's changed, it allows, doesn't allow it anymore. Once that use is gone or fifty percent of that use is gone, then that use is gone. So you will have to see if Steve can come up with something. But if the board decides to allow him to do something for an extended period of time to get through this process. That's one thing, but then it's going to be whether or not the PCA is going to see that as we're still open. You know, I don't know that they can give us a permit by rule if he doesn't match zoning. So that would be something that Steve will have to sort through to see if we can continue a non-conforming use for one year.
If we are in the process of covering this of, you know, we're still going to need access to this site. So we're technically still going to be leasing this land. Is that something we can, like you say, do that non-conforming use to carry through this interim while we're closing this thing? You know, we're not going to take in any more demo and I, I think everyone's in agreement, you know, because of these rule changes, we have to close the demo. But you know, just focusing on this transfer, just to keep this stuff, you know, out of the ditches.
Well, I guess one question there is would they consider that one of the criteria when the new rules go into effect, they haven't written yet.
Right, and I think she was very willing to work with us, my understanding, when you spoke with.
You know, but she's got, she has to talk to a whole lot of other counties and other cities and a lot of other staff at PCA. She has so much pull, but one staff person, okay.
I think it, I think it's important, she's not writing the rules, someone else is. Sherry, I'm talking about Sherry who was on, or the other person that was on that day. They aren't, they aren't writing the rules, they're just trying to figure out how do we, how do we help you guys get through this? Or help these counties get through this. Knowing what we think is coming down, which they were pretty shady gray about answering any specific questions that day. And I don't blame them, because we're going to remember everything they say. And if it's different later, it's different later and I understand that. But I think, um, you know, I understand where Todd's going and I, I'm in agreement. We need something on that end of the county. Where it happens, how it happens, there's just a lot of moving parts. And do I think the county in the future is going to expend money on this? One way or another, townships or, or us are going to be picking it up out of the ditch and spending money to do that. Which we already do. Or we're going to spend money to try to do the right thing and get this stuff recycled, what can be recycled and put in the right demolition where it needs to go.
Mr. Stever, you have a comment?
Well.
Can you come up here to the microphone, please?
Glenn Stever, um, I guess I, I ran the demolition landfill for many, many years. Um, and I guess, not a very good speaker, sorry. But I will say, um, I did talk to Sherry and she said that you know, when you're closing this landfill, and I don't have a problem, I can see where you guys are coming from. I think we need to close it, uh, the demo part of it. But she said that we can still accept demo and we could have the transfer station running as we're closing that. So really nothing, I mean, it would change, we're not burying anything, it's all getting hauled out. That was my, uh, I guess that's what I would like to keep doing. Um, everybody that has come to the landfill, I have a small petition. I mean, you guys came out and said, yeah, you got a year and a half, two years. I'm going, wow, yeah, I knew it was coming. Uh, and then a couple of days later, you call me up and say sixty days. And that's kind of a kick in the face, but everybody that came out after that, well, I just started a petition. And everybody that came out says, no, we got to have something here, we're not driving all the way to Red Wing, we're not driving to Rochester. Half of the people that come there, their vehicles wouldn't make it to Rochester or Red Wing, I'm sorry. Um, and, and as far as, I mean, Saturdays, most people come there and go, oh my God, I'm glad you're open Saturdays. Cause nobody else is, that's the only time they have to take stuff. Um, last Saturday, I, it must have been mattress day, I had over twenty mattresses and couches. I mean, it's just, if we don't take that stuff somewhere, it's going to be in the ditches. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So obviously we're all in agreement, the landfill is getting closed. I do think we need to change our ordinance to allow for transfer stations within the county, which would how it would solve Stever's issue, but there's several entities, private entities we currently have that are servicing the boxes. Servicing the boxes and the dumpsters already, which may be very valid aspect for them to turn to be a transfer station. They need to have the option too. It does not, we should not be a government aspect at all. If the cities want to work with a private vendor, fine, there's several in Lake City Recycling. Private entity runs a transfer station right in the city of Lake City, Bakers. Veen, they're all running boxes, they're running transfer stations in Waukesha County, it can be done very well. We should change the ordinance to allow for transfer stations, it's pretty simple. And it's probably being done already in the county, just not specifically listed where you're bringing a box in, transferring the components. So it should be done, it's very simple, change your ordinance to allow it. Condition use permits, we're tracking it, we're following it. You can't, should not, we probably can, but we should not just identify it for Mr. Stever to say, you can just do it in land, in Wanamango. And the other thing is we have to get past this point of it's going to end up in the ditches. Who here is going to take the effort to take their mattress or their couch and throw in the ditch? Cause it's going to cost them twenty bucks. You're really going to find that person that is fully intending to throw it in the ditch. Because they don't want to drive all the way to Red Wing, but they're, if they could, they drive to Wanamango five miles and pay the ten, fifteen bucks. The people that are throwing the stuff in the ditch are going to continue to throw it in the ditch, no matter how or what we do. Unless they put it on the curb and we offer maybe public works and pickup day. So we want to put everything on the curbs out on the roadside and public works can go out and pick everything up for a week. Probably the only way you're going to eliminate it and then they still probably will throw in the ditch, so. I, I get everybody's aspect with it, but it, I fail to see the argument that people keep saying we're going to end up with stuff in the ditch. If you're that kind of person that throw in the ditch, you're going to throw it in the ditch no matter what. So let's change the zoning so that we have everybody, nobody's saying that we're going to have ten transfer stations. But we need to give the other private entities the option to do it. It's been done, has been done, can be done very well. Give everybody the option, Glenn can continue to operate, all their entities can continue to operate, seems very simple, so.
Questions?
I still think this is a unique situation where we are still going to be there as the county, we still have to lease this land. And I think we're going to have to work out an agreement, we're going to continue to lease this land for years, right? The whole time this monitoring is going on, are we going to have to pay for access to that land or how do we?
That's a good question, Commissioner, we don't know what the answer is at that point. That's why we need to sit down, have a conversation with Glenn and trying to figure out what do we want to do in the future.
So I guess if, if Mr. O'Keefe could check out that non-conforming use, if that could be extended, um, you know, if that's an option. If uh, you know, like I say, the zoning, you're absolutely right with private entities, let everyone have a shot at it. But there again, the neighbors are going to say, you know, I'm, I'm sitting on the PAC and they uh, they didn't want uh, you know, uh, other buildings in their areas, so I don't think, I think they're going to fight these.
And they have it right when it changes the zoning, but I think, and I'm assuming the zoning issue will, we change that will transfer back even to Glenn, how he's going to deal with his property, but seems to me his situation would be solved a lot easier if we have zoning. It has an option to zone it, so.
We could change, we could go to the zoning for the first hearing probably in January, I think by this time, our January meeting. Um, go through planning commission, go through the county board. Uh, keep in mind, the cities all get notified on it, they can comment, just like anything else when we do a zoning change. So from what I'm hearing and is, we would not be partners with anybody in the future. It would be private operated, right?
My recommendation that it would be.
Okay.
I guess they still would like to check on that non-conforming use while we're in this closer process.
Okay, and then also, um, it would remain a small operation per by rule, nothing bigger than that. That sound about the general direction you want us to write?
Hundred and twenty cubic yard limit of a transfer station, so. And that's the MPCA rule currently.
Right.
We're just following along with their rules.
Yep, and then uh, any particular zone you don't want it in, you know, I think we can still, like I say, buffer the residential areas a thousand feet. Just like we do with feedlots, keep it out of the wetlands, off the bluffs, that sort of thing. Um, but A1, A2, A3, business shouldn't be an issue in any of those as an opportunity for somebody. So we'll throw it out as that, see how that goes.
So would it still be a conditional use permit for each one? So I mean, if, if the ordinance has changed, then anybody can just do it? Or they have to come and get a conditional use permit?
They would have to come get a conditional use permit.
Right, and then who, do you enforce the conditional use permits?
We, we would, you know, it's no different than any other conditional use permit we enforce. You know, if we require fencing, then we make sure that's in before they start operations and stuff. So it would be just another enforcement issue if there wasn't something going on. But like I say, there are companies out there that have the equipment, they have the dumpsters, you know, we've had to use some of those companies and some of the cleanups, so.
Now, does your department have the capacity to do that?
We will see. Um, a- again, I don't know that it's, it's, it's kind of, in the zoning, we provide tools for the townships and the county to do business and have a house. Whether somebody uses that tool or not, it's up to them. So if you have a guy that has a farm and he wants to block part of his off, part of it off for a transfer station. He thinks it's a great idea and he's got the equipment, he's thinks he can make money off of it, then maybe he should have a chance to do that and, and apply. But it's not going to be like everybody can now open a transfer station on their yard, they're not going to want that. So I don't know that we're going to get a lot of takers on it, but you know, because there's a lot of, there's the county regulations and then there's the state regulations, which are going to be a lot more onerous than to get through than what you have to do through the county, so. We will provide the tools and we'll see who wants to take up and then you guys can decide if it works.
It would take two processes probably for someone to open one, one rezone.
It depends.
Yeah, unless they're already zoned, be
Unless it's allowed.
Or wherever, however you put it. I wouldn't think you'd want to just allow it in a A1, A2, A3 without a rezone. That's my personal opinion, I could be wrong, because it really is not compatible with, it's not an agricultural. You know, I, I just, I would have questions about that. And then, um, I, I do get concerned about regulation, because I know we have a hard time. We have lots of permits that aren't getting followed the way they're supposed to get followed and it's really hard to get through the process, not only in your office, but also in Steve's office. It's just, it's very time consuming and difficult to get through.
And I understand that too, but you know, again, if it's a private business, I mean, this is their business. They don't want to get shut down if they're making money on it. So they're not going to want to get the permits or, or go through the process of all this and purchase things and hire people or do whatever they got to do and then get shut down for a zoning violation, so. Being that it's private, they've got a little bit more skin in the game.
Being limited to the size too will help.
Correct. But a hundred and twenty yards in twenty yard dumpsters is how many dumpsters sitting around full of that have to be totally covered, not with just, you know, a screen. They gotta keep water out of them, that's what MPCA is going to say. Those are not, that's just, it's difficult, to me, it's difficult. That's why I'm worried about opening it all the way up. I, I see regulation challenges all over the place.
Well, even if we were part of it, I think those challenges would still be there.
Right.
So, but.
But we, we're a part of the management of it then, instead of just allowing someone to manage it. It's just, it, it's concerns of mine, I, I need to see how you write the ordinance and how, if you get to that point, how we can regulate it and be responsible to the public, because that's really what we're trying to do, is be responsible to the public. And, and I, I can agree with Jason, you know, people who are going to throw stuff in the ditch are going to throw stuff in the ditch. But given no opportunity, it's going to end up in somebody's back gully and get it get burned when it shouldn't get burned, it's going to get everything else that's going to happen that we don't want to happen. And some of it is really a matter of, and Glenn knows this, if you can And some of it is really a matter of, and Glenn knows this, if you can separate shingles away from the other stuff. The shingles gotta reuse. You know, some of the woods gotta reuse, but some of it doesn't. And it's just, how, how good are the people that do it gonna be at separating? If we're involved or somebody, a government's involved, we can make sure we're doing the best job we can with recycling.
Well, if the government's involved though, then you've gotta have somebody enforce it.
I I I'm not.
Effect of what that means.
I I I totally agree with you. I'm not saying the government's gonna be the most efficient. But I'm gonna say that I think the government will make sure we do a better job of doing the sorting and. Getting product to go to the right places.
Well, if you sort it right, if you don't sort it and you bring it up to S K B, you're paying a higher price, cause now it's mixed. So it's into the, again, the private guy's best interest to sort it good before it goes, make more money.
I thought the financial incentive has to be to do it correctly.
Right.
And you have to have an understanding of the garbage from head to toe too. I mean, where does all the recycling go now? Not worth any money, so single sort, single sort into a landfill or wherever it gets dumped, so. Just cause you separated on your curb doesn't mean it's getting sorted and recycled folks, so.
My question.
Have an understanding of garbage before we make that assessments.
Let's say we do an ordinance and find out that we don't wanna do this anymore. We can change that ordinance or cancel it or say, all of a sudden, we got eight applications in the first month we open this up. That then you as the land use management team will research those and look at those and you'll give recommendations to the P A C.
Correct, and then you can put any kind of conditions you want on them. You know, you can say, we're gonna do a yearly review. And we're gonna charge you for the yearly review to see how you're doing. You know, so you can put on any kind of conditions that you want. Anything that we can actually do, you know, let's not have the argument about posing that dark again, so. You know, something that's solid that we can see if it's happening or not.
And really, it's not, it's a two tracks, cause there's us and there's the townships. And there are townships that virtually have no zoning organs. And there are some that have very strict zoning organs, so it's gonna be, there's gonna be a battle there too.
If they want it, yeah. It might be that you have a township that thinks it's a value.
Right, and we have some officials from Wanamingo. I don't know if they have some comments and I'd be interested to hear, cause it's right next door to them.
Yeah, I I.
Sorry, we come up to the microphone and just give your name and where your from, please?
Yep, Ryan Holmes, I'm the mayor of Wanamingo. Um, I agree with you guys. I think it's really important to have that transfer station availability. For, you know, the community and a lot of people are bringing their things in there and I agree with uh, with Commissioner Anderson said that, you know. If they don't have access to a place to get rid of it, are they gonna be more prone to throwing those things in the ditches or finding other ways to get rid of those things? You're right, Jason, there's people are gonna throw or they're gonna throw in the ditches regardless seemingly, but if they have an access to a transfer station. Area like that, they take advantage of it. I mean, I go out there many times and it's amazing the number of people that are bringing things out there and dropping off. And and it's been in, I don't even know how many years, um, Glenn's had that in in operation there, but. It's been many years, so people are very familiar with that area and bringing things to that spot. And so I think it's just nice to have an opportunity there anyway, so. So we love to see that as an option to open that up so that at least could have those things brought to that.
And as far as Wanamingo goes, the industrial park is pretty full?
Yeah, there's no, yeah, we don't have any available area in Wanamingo right now for anything like that, so.
And future expansion takes four years, five years, two, I don't know how many years it takes, but. I guess if you're really eager to get more land, I guess that'd be an option to look at in the future.
Right, right. But yeah, currently, we don't have any available land or anything like that that would. Be accessible for that kind of thing, so, but yeah, but yeah, I appreciate you listening to us anyway, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You looking for consensus of the direction to go, or do you feel you have that?
I heard it.
Alright, we're definitely going to.
We've already voted on that.
Alright, so as far as the transfer station, though, and the change in zoning.
I think the consensus is to allow transfer stations.
Yes.
We're caught to details there.
You know, I think we don't want five hundred transfer stations, but I think you believe that will be limited because they won't make money on five hundred. That we don't need to set, they need to be ten miles apart or twenty miles apart.
I mean, volumetrically, when you look at Wanamingo, it's open about half the year, three days a week, the other half, two days a week. And the volumes aren't excessive, so. There's only so much material out there.
And I suppose someone could invest the money in it and someone could do it next door for a little bit cheaper and then. The first person is kind of screwed.
Competition.
Yeah, right, but that's.
Based off the timeframe, when we look at this ordinance coming out, um, I still want to um. Review the option of extending that nonconform, nonconforming use, so. If that can, this thing can stay operational while we're doing this closure process, and I think Sherry did. You know, basically said that she's okay with it, but there again, I mean, she's the person that we go through for M P C A, so. If that's an option to, cause once you close something, all of a sudden, then it's a whole nother deal to keep it going, so hopefully that can be reviewed. Through our legal department, see if that is an option to keep going. Cause the, like I said, I don't know how long it's gonna take to get that zoning issue if this goes through a meeting in January, we're talking March anyway before. You know, we could even have the zoning process going, so.
So I kinda see, kinda the way you do. There's kinda two tracks. One is first, let's figure out if we can do something to. Work through our own problem with zoning, short term. And then second, look for long-term solutions. I think the question we haven't asked is, we think, we think we could end up with. Six, seven, eight of these. M P C A may have a different opinion of that. They may say, yeah, you can have. A couple of transfer stations, but you can't have transfer stations all over the county. Cause they have to be a part of that regulation, so they may, they may have some limiting factors that we haven't got answers to yet.
The P B R process is a lot less stringent, as Greg mentioned earlier. Be a lot fewer hoops.
But if they had, if they had, all of a sudden had seven or eight applications from Goodyear County, their I would go up. I would think. If I were them, my eyebrows would go up. What is changing? What's, how can this work? So I think we need all those questions answered and then, you know, um. Lisa's timeframes, you know, probably it'll take till January to get something figured out and find out what other counties have done in the same. Kind of situation with transfer stations to have, we don't need to reinvent the wheel if we can find some. Really positive things happening somewhere else that we can follow.
About one minute left, so is there anything else you need or?
Oh, very good direction.
Thank you, very, very.
We don't, we don't need to take any action to have them.
That's as much action as we can take.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it.